All right, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? All right, we took number two off the consent agenda. Does anybody want to approve consent agenda without number two?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, presentations, number five, presentation, public hearing and resolution. Jessica, you want to read that?
Notice of hearing on improvement. To whom it may concern, notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Columbus will meet in the City Hall 16319 Kettle River Boulevard at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 25, 2018, to consider the making of an improvement in the northeast quadrant of I-35 and TH-97 City Project 2018-3 by subgrade excavation, sanitary sewer gravity pipe and water main pipe installation and miscellaneous items of construction pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter 429. The area proposed to be assessed for such improvements is each lot or parcel which will be served by these utility extensions. The estimated cost of the improvement for which assessments will be levied is $479,200. Persons desiring to be heard with reference to the proposed improvement will be heard at this meeting. Signed, Elizabeth Marisco, City Administrator, published in the Forest Lake Times on July 12th and July 19th, 2018.
All right, we'll open a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak on this topic? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and we'll discuss it here amongst us. Dennis, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Yeah, just a quick summary again. If, at the last council meeting, gave a presentation on the feasibility report, so this is to extend sanitary sewer and water main to the northeast quadrant from its existing location. And don't need to get into the details, but it'll follow the new alignment of Hornsby Street and go up to approximately the north end of the city property. And the schedule for this is to, if it is authorized, to proceed with plans and specifications this evening would be to parallel the Hornsby Street schedule. So it'll prepare plans and specs, bid the project in February, and construct it next spring.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a quick note, we have a pre-development agreement with the potential buyer of the northeast quad, so that pre-development agreement would pick up the developer's share of costs for both the items that are on the agenda this evening.
Would they pick it up upon time when they build or upfront?
The assessments would be over, I think, a 10-year period, so they could be paid off at the time that parcels are sold, which is pretty typical. Somebody comes in and they buy a parcel out of the northeast quadrant, the developer would then pay off the assessments typically, but it's not required.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to bond for this, is that how we're gonna get there?
Some portion of it, some portion of it is covered by grant, not these hearing items, but the road itself is covered by grant.
This amount would be bonded for.
Bonded for. Have we looked at supporting it ourselves from Bridge Fund or Road Fund or?
We would not have the money to cover this within our own finances to do an inter-fund loan at this time.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Bill? No.
Well, did them numbers come in about what we were ballpark thought it would be?
I'm sorry?
That $479,200 bucks, is that the ballpark that we estimated that we were at?
That's still our estimate. We won't know the actual number till we bid it.
It goes out to bidding.
February.
All right, we need to approve this?
So one of your enclosures, A1, I believe is a resolution?
Number?
It's 1817.
1817. You want to make a motion, a resolution 1817?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 18-17.
Second.
Okay, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next up is a public hearing on site grading, storm and water drainage, ponding.
Notice of hearing on improvement. To whom it may concern, notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Columbus will meet in the City Hall 16319 Kettle River Boulevard at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 25, 2018, to consider an improvement in the northeast quadrant of I-35 and TH-97 City Project 2018-2 of overall site grading, stormwater drainage and ponding requirements, and incorporating preliminary grades for the proposed Hornsby Street realignment pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter 429. The area proposed to be assessed for such improvements is each lot or parcel which will be served by these proposed grading and drainage improvements. The estimated cost of the improvement for which assessments will be levied is $383,000. Persons desiring to be heard with reference to the proposed improvement will be heard at this meeting. Signed, Elizabeth Marisco, City Administrator, published in the Forest Lake Times on July 12th and July 19th, 2018.
Thank you. Open a public hearing. Anybody in the public have anything to say? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Anybody up front want to talk about it?
I can give a quick summary again. This is the same area we were talking about, the last project, but this is for preparing grading plan for the entire site as well as the storm sewer and ponding. And part of that will be covered with the Hornsby Street project and funding, that stormwater attributable to the roadway. But we are going to oversize the ponds and the storm sewer to account for all the future development, and that's what this cost is for.
What was the cost on this one?
$383,000 for design and construction.
And we're working with the possible developer on this at all or?
Yeah, these requirements are, the stormwater has to meet a certain sizing for Rice Creek Watershed District requirements. So we will take this plan and our calculations, get approval from, hopefully get approval from Rice Creek Watershed District. We will build the two ponds on the bottom, which would be the east side of the property, because that's where Hornsby Street and Hornsby Street Storm Sewer will drain to. And we're going to oversize those ponds for whatever development occurs there in the future. And then the developer would actually come in and do the mass grading themselves and build the pond on the west side of the property, because that does not have any stormwater going to it from Hornsby Street.
Okay. Bill?
No, we pretty much went over this last meeting on that, so.
It'll be built with the Hornsby Street project, but the cost has to be separated out because it's for development and it won't be covered by the LRIP funds, but this will be assessed then to the development.
Okay, we're gonna bond for this also. Is there gonna be more bonds coming? I mean, we got, how much are we having bonds now? I mean, just hypothetical, is this quite a bit? I mean, how much do I get in debt there is what I'm thinking.
Off the top of my head, I don't know how much in debt we are as far as the overall indebtedness, but we are having a bond sale this year. My recommendation is that we combine and only have one bond sale so that we save on the cost of issuance and we can spread it out over three projects versus only one. And then also, when we move down into the Treasurers' report, I'm also gonna recommend that we refund two bonds we had in 2007, because if we're gonna go out for sale, we might as well refund. And looking at that refunding, I think we can save in the area of $60,000, not changing term.
Just a quick note, Mr. Mayor and Council, special assessment bonds are viewed differently than other debt, city debt, because they have a dedicated revenue source for repayment. And so when we're rated, when we look at our debt, it's looked at differently because there is that revenue source to support the bonds.
All right. You want to make a motion on a resolution? 18?
1818.
Make a motion to accept resolution 18-18.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now we're gonna talk about Anoka County JP Lexington and Broadway project. They want to put some lights up there, some signals?
Correct, this is for the traffic signal project the county is doing at Lexington and Broadway. So what you have in front of you is a draft joint powers agreement that lays out the cost breakdown and the maintenance responsibilities. Again, this is a project that the county has 90% federal funding for. So the cities, when all comes down to the bottom of it, the city's share of the project is $6,015, but after funding is applied, it's estimated at $1,002. The city is, since the city is not a state aid community, the county is picking up that share of the traffic signal portion, whereas Ham Lake will be paying for theirs.
Have we talked to Ham Lake about maintenance agreement between us and them on this?
No, I did have a few comments that, there's a few items that need to be worked out in that regard, maintenance related. Typically, if you have a signal that's split down the middle with the city jurisdiction, it's 50/50. But at this point, there's no west leg of the intersection, but they are preparing, providing for it for the future. So the lights and the signals are as if there's four ways, because it'll serve the driveway for now.
Ham Lake was on board with this signal or?
I believe they are.
They've already approved the joint powers agreement at a previous meeting.
Okay.
I just wonder what made them ever decide to put a stoplight there? I don't know. I've never had a problem there.
I'm not sure they had a highway, I believe it's a Highway Elimination Safety, HES, fund, so sight distance, I don't know if there's an accident history there, I'm not sure.
What does that usually cost us for lights for the roundabout? We got, I mean, I suppose the traffic light at Running Ace's Boulevard would be comparison. What's that cost a month?
Anoka County bills us quarterly, and we have to pay for the maintenance of the streetlights, and if they're, and every so often it has to be painted and we have to pay for that. And we also pay for the emergency lighting, the opticon for the ambulances to go through. And so they bill us quarterly for it, and I want to say it's $1,250 a quarter today.
$1,200 bucks a quarter.
I believe so.
Be more in line with a roundabout in there at that price, but we can't change that.
They did say that this, this electric light, however, was LEDs, and they said it was gonna be less maintenance, because apparently Anoka County changes bulbs every year, you know, on lights, and now they've changed away from that with the LEDs, and they said it should last for 20 years. So we're hoping it's less electricity and less cost in light bulbs.
Did you get a chance to call Washington County or anybody, see if that's the way they do things?
I did call Washington County, and all three deputy, both the county engineer and the two deputies did not answer, so I didn't have a chance to talk to them.
It's hard to believe Connor Road to Connor Road would be responsible for anything there, but I guess that's the way Anoka County does it.
I believe that's the way a lot of counties.
Do they?
Do it, unfortunately.
Okay. So we need a motion to pass the joint powers agreement?
If you'd like to do so, maybe contingent upon, you know, a few of the maintenance agreement items, we can work those out.
You think it should be split 50/50? Is that, I don't?
I think that's typically what's done again for, in this case, it's each city would have one leg and half the other leg.
Wasn't as per meeting last week, or last meeting was that they actually have to pay a lot more money than we do their share?
Yeah.
So.
They're not, they don't have 5,000 people, so they need to pay?
It's a considerable more money than we have to pay.
Yeah, it was about 10 times a factor.
I would like to see a 50/50 if we can get it, but if we can't, I don't think it's a deal breaker.
It probably has to be 50/50, I think they would agree with that. Neither one of us really need it.
Do we need to sign, get into this joint agreement right now, or can we postpone until we get, find out what the joint agreement would be?
So the joint powers agreement is with Anoka County in order to move forward with the project. The joint powers agreement with Ham, the City of Ham Lake will determine how we, amongst the two cities, divide the maintenance costs. So there's another joint powers agreement that has to be negotiated with Ham Lake.
So you're gonna approve this tonight and deal with that another night?
All right, you may like to make a motion to agree to the joint powers with Anoka County?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now we're gonna look at the Anoka County County Road 23 and Roundabout.
So this is another joint powers agreement for the county's project on Lake Drive, and again, this is where they are splitting the improvements on Lake Drive to be done this year, and the new 54 alignment to be done next year. This joint powers agreement covers just the improvements on Lake Drive for this year. And the city's share of those costs, we go through county policies and breakdown, the city's responsible for some of the curb and gutter and the pathway, some of the storm sewer. That cost actually comes up to $114,285, but it should all be covered by the bonding money, local road improvement money, when it's all said and done. So they just put that number in here for now, but it, once the local road improvement funds are applied, it should be, it should be no cost to the city.
When you say bonding money, you mean the bond from the state?
Correct.
$9 million that was approved last year and then again this year.
And the city, the county has bid this project already and had their pre-construction meeting, or that's coming up shortly, but they do expect construction starting in second or third week in August and be done by the end of October if all goes well with the roundabout.
So Elizabeth, the lights on the roundabout, we already have one of those, so what does that cost?
I'm not sure that I could break out the electric cost, because again, that's through LEDs, but it is passed along to us. The only other maintenance we have is we have to insure the lights, because the lights are ours, so we have the cost of the insurance. But I think the cost that we would definitely have to figure out is public works and maintenance, because they have to shovel the sidewalks and maintain the sidewalks and maintain the ponds. And because it's just a relatively new thing, they haven't had a whole lot of maintenance required for them, but it's, the maintenance is more in labor than it is in.
So is that Ryan, does Ryan mow those? Mow that round, who mows the roundabout? Ryan doesn't do it. Okay.
So the agreement is the exact same, the roundabout at Lake Drive and 54 would be the same agreement we have at Kettle River Boulevard and Broadway.
So we're mowing it once a week and the electric and all that, who knows? We still don't really know how much it's costing.
Kettle River Boulevard, we didn't have to pay for the curb and gutter there, did we? You say we're paying for curb and gutter?
We paid $32,000, or in the range of $32,000 was our contribution towards the roundabout.
And that was for lighting and something else too?
The trails, the, well, what they call the trail around the roundabout.
So what was the cost to the city, shall we say, when that last light got ripped down, replacement? Because there was a hassle with the insurance company who was gonna pay for that?
And would that be corrected by the time we do this new one, so we won't have that issue again?
At the time, I was not under the understanding that the city, or the streetlights, were going to be owned by the city and that we had to maintain them. So I was quite surprised when a vehicle hit the pole and the pole was laying down and we didn't have a accident report, so we don't know who did it. So there wasn't, you know, restitution to pay for it. And when we called Anoka County, Anoka County said that we were responsible for the repairs and maintenance, and I said, well, I don't have any insurance on it. Yeah, I didn't think they were our lights. And they said, oh, right here is in the agreement. It was kind of vague as to, you know, what really maintenance meant, because when I look at maintenance and operations, I didn't think ownership was under that umbrella. Well, they clarified it, now in this agreement, it's more clarified as to what that means. And so since then, I've put them on the insurance, so they're insured, and we have a $500 deductible on our insurance. So it wouldn't happen again, it's just, it was, in that particular case, it was a surprise. So they did, my understanding is they did replace the one that was out there at their cost.
Okay. I didn't know our deductible was 500, so that's pretty reasonable for one damage. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on that? Do we motion for that one already?
Yes.
Okay, moving on then. Planning Commission report.
Oh, we didn't do it.
No, you did motion then. All right, I thought we did. All right, any motions for the joint power agreement? County Road 23 Roundabout?
There's no resolution.
Just make a motion.
It's a joint powers agreement.
Okay, motion to accept the joint powers agreement between Anoka County and Columbus on the roundabout, County Road 23 Roundabout.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Planning Commission report now.
On Wednesday, July 18th, the Planning Commission met, and we had a public hearing for a preliminary plat request for Bame's Corner Plat 2. Kathy Bame-Lavesser requested, represented herself and her husband Steve. The property is located at 15650 Willamette Street. They want to split a 10-acre lot with a home on it and create a new 5-acre lot and retain the 5-acre lot with the home on it. The city planner, the zoning administrator and the engineer have reviewed the application, and the Planning Commission forwards it to the City Council for approval.
All right. Do you have any questions on this property split? Out and entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. What else do you have?
The next thing we discussed were the Hugo and Blaine Comprehensive Plan reviews and the recommendations by the staff. I believe the staff had nothing to add or comment to the Blaine Comp Plan, but with the Hugo Comprehensive Plan, they had one comment, and Elizabeth told us this was included in the Washington County Comprehensive Plan, and that is that the City of Columbus is supportive of considering interchanges at both 170th and 180th Street, with 180th Street being our first choice.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the Blaine Comprehensive Plan? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion, accept it.
You're sending it on without comment.
Without comment?
Yep. So it's not an approval. It's not an approval, yeah, accepting it without comment.
Okay. Bill?
Second.
All in favor?
Wait, so we were talking about the 180th, I don't, were we all in agreement with that?
No, that's the next one, Hugo.
Oh, okay, Hugo.
We do Blaine first.
Yep.
Sorry. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we'll talk about the Hugo Comprehensive Plan. You probably want to add 180th Street?
The Hugo Plan supports the 170th interchange on 35E, and I don't, I don't believe they talk in detail about the interchange at 35, but I do believe that their comprehensive plan is the same as 10 years ago, as they are supportive of the alignment of 170th, which is 4th Avenue through Hugo. When we did the Washington County Plan, there was some discussion at the council level that in fact you wanted to add to that and say there may be another option, and the other option would be a 180th alignment, and that you wanted to add that as a comment. So from a city staff point and a planner comment perspective, we asked the Planning Commission if they felt that was important to add to the Hugo Plan, or whether to send it with no comment, and they passed it along, saying that perhaps we should include the same comment as we did with the Washington County Plan.
The Met Council will look at comments and see our comment, they don't have to, Hugo doesn't have to add it into theirs?
No, they don't have to unless Met Council thinks it's significant.
Okay. Does Hugo?
Take that into account.
Does 170th, does that go to 35W also?
No, it goes from, it goes from 54 across 35E and then, and it goes to the roundabout on 61. It never crosses 35.
It doesn't, but does Hugo want to see it go to 35W?
But that was the big, remember the big plan, was they're gonna try and run it through the Rice.
Through the swamp.
Through the swamp, Rice Creek.
Unpractical, and it never happened. That's why we're looking at other options.
However, it probably is more likely that they would put the on/off ramps there rather than build 180th. And then I think our concern was that we got on and off ramps at County Road 54. So Forest Lake is, remember we went to that meeting with Forest Lake, and they were all excited about 180th Street, so.
So I'm sure they got an air comp plan. Does Lionel Lakes have anything on theirs?
We have not received Lionel Lakes or Forest Lakes comp plan, so I can't tell you that.
I heard a rumor they're on extension.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they're on an exten, they requested an extension.
It's more in Hugo's best interest to do work on 170th instead of going to 180th, because 180th doesn't.
Well, it's more in Hugo, and looking at it for quite a while. So we want to see that added to theirs is 180th?
We can.
Yeah, so if you make a motion with that?
I think we supported both, right?
We did. In the Washington County Transportation Plan, you supported both and just indicated that your preference was 180th.
180th, yes.
Okay, we need a motion to say that.
What's for their comp plan that's not ours, correct?
I'm making a motion on the Blaine, I'm thinking we need to make a motion on the Hugo. There's motion in front of it.
So you want to include in the motion to request?
Well, your motion, your motion was that you were gonna send no comments, you know, no comments to Blaine. The motion here would be, yes, you would like to include the comment as you did in Washington County's transportation plan.
Do you want to make that motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes to include 180th on that. We have an addition here, motion for the Lackner Final Plat?
In your additions, you have the Lackner's final plat application. This is a plat that came before you several weeks ago. They've now applied for final plat. In this particular case, in May 9th, we talked about an agreement. They asked for a deferment plan on the escrow, and we agreed, the council agreed, that we would draft a plan to allow them to defer the dollars that it would take to improve half the road. And so it's gonna be subject to that agreement.
And we can call that, just for the record, call it an improvement agreement?
I had the minutes, and now I'm just not finding.
What do we have, this is plat, that we're looking at, the plat?
The plat is a handout in your materials.
You may want to do something to property and not improve the road, is that?
The plat only covers half the road, or goes to the center of the road, and in the past, when it only covers half the road, we have entered into a deferred escrow agreement. So in your additions on A4, we talked about this on the May 9th meeting, because they came before you and indicated that they didn't have the ability to put the money in escrow if they didn't sell the land. And so the council agreed that they would make an exception in this case, and indicated to our attorney that, for him to draft the deferred escrow agreement for the Lackners. So in between that time and now, they applied for final plat, so this final plat is subject to title review and a deferred escrow. So this final plat is subject to title review and a deferred escrow agreement, or signed deferred escrow agreement.
So before we sign off on the final, we would get that agreement?
Correct. And it would be in the amount of $15,000.
And would they fund it at closing, when they close on the property?
Is that how it would work?
Yeah. I mean, if the argument is they don't have the money until they close on the property, then when they close on the property, they have the proceeds of the sale.
Okay.
You're okay with that? You go sign the point?
Yes.
All right. You have any questions, Bill? Mark? Anything on that? Give you a second to look it over.
So when you're ready, the motion would be to approve the Lackner final plat, subject to the deferred escrow agreement.
And title review.
And title review.
I'm sorry, was there a timeframe on that agreement? I know you said when the property sells or they close, and they got hit, but is there a timeframe otherwise?
The agreement would be, the agreement would be executed at the time of the approval of the, signing off on the final plat. It would be funded upon sale of the property. So once it's funded, we have the escrow, and that escrow would be held until the road is improved.
Yeah, very specific. We would hold it for 10 years. I think what Mark is asking is, so say they close five years from now, is that okay? Because we're going to, we're going to record it against the property?
Yes.
Okay. So right now, it's an undetermined amount of time.
Okay. I always get, you want to hear that?
Motion on it, or not?
Going to get paid off in there, or I'd say so moved. Accept it.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Jesse? That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. All right. Now it's time for a public open forum. Is anybody, oops.
Dan Mike, 15123 Hornsby Street. I just got a question. Where does the city stand in the rezoning of that freeway district that's been in the works for a while?
Right now, our comprehensive plan is out for review. It went out for review, I believe, just before June 30th. So each of our surrounding cities and our, and our school districts, watershed districts and such, have six months to review our comprehensive plan and send back comments. So until that comment period is over, or we receive, or we receive all the comments from the surrounding cities, and Met Council approves our plan, we wouldn't move forward with any of those inconsistencies with our current ordinance. When the plan is adopted, next year, we'll be working on making the comprehensive plan consistent with the ordinance is. And that's, that's the normal process. When you adopt a new comprehensive plan, then you go through your ordinances and you make it consistent with the new comprehensive plan. So it, it takes, I would say, once you adopt the comp plan, six months to a year before everything is consistent.
So our neighbors could object to the city's comp plan?
They could. They would have to have a basis for the objection. It can't just be kind of generalized. It has to be, you're showing development where there isn't appropriate infrastructure, you're phasing development, leapfrogging over adjoining development, the roads aren't up to, to, you know, kind of planned construction and so forth. So it has to be on kind of one of the major systems that the Met Council looks at, which are roads, sewers, airports, parks, I think there's one, housing, you know. So it has to be on one of those bases. It can't just be a generalized objection that we don't like your comp plan.
So everything that's, the zoning that's there now, it can't be changed until the comp plan is done, correct?
We're kind of in this limbo period right now, because we've, we've indicated that we're going to make changes, and the process is that we have this six-month comment, you know, comment period, and then Met Council approves it. So I don't think Met Council allows you to amend your current plan. You know what I mean? Because the plan has already been said that it's going to change.
Yeah. Until, until it goes through this process, we can't, the city can't rezone it inconsistent with the comp plan. So it's probably about another six to 12 months before that can be accomplished.
That's what I, that's what I'm thinking, too.
But in interim, if there's some business that want to come down there, they could do an amendment, correct?
There's a period after which the Met Council will not process amendments. Originally, it was going to be June 30th of this year. I believe they moved that back to December. So there is a very narrow window where someone could bring in a comprehensive plan amendment. If it got approved here, it would go to the Met Council for consideration and approval. I think by the time, you know, somebody would get their act together, get in here, we're going to be in that kind of embargo period that they've established. They've got so many comprehensive plans coming in right now, they don't want to review one-off amendments. They'd rather see them come as part of the, the update, so.
If you're referring to a use being amended or a tax amendment within the code, yes, the council can amend the code to add, to add a particular used in a district at the current time.
And they can do that throughout the review of the comprehensive plan. So the zoning code can be amended, as, as the city administrator mentioned, but the question that, that the council would ask is this, is this premature, given that we're looking at changes in the comp plan? Should those, even those tax amendments be deferred until the comp plan is updated for consistency? So that's, that's what they're looking at. Again, I think that, you know, by the time someone made an application and got in front of the council, we're almost at that end of the year timeframe where there, there wouldn't be further consideration until the update is accomplished.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, so the city could do a tax amendment to the zoning over there?
Yes.
Now?
It's not to the zoning, it's to the uses within the current district.
Okay.
So you're, you're, the only, the only thing we can do now is, if they feel a use is appropriate in a particular zoning district, they can amend the code. But as far as the zoning map, we've already determined what's industrial and what's in commercial, and when, as soon as that's approved, then they'll determine, drill down a little bit to individual zoning districts. And that's why I said we're kind of in this limbo right now, because we've already designated commercial versus industrial. And the next step, as soon as it's approved, would be individual zoning districts, and changing those and updating those.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi. My name's Michelle Betts. I live at 701335th Avenue, and I'm here to discuss the Zakowski Trucking. Back in, I believe it was October, Bill and his wife had come out, and we had talked to the Zakowskis, and that, me, and we.
Should we?
Is.
This is on the agenda. Do you want to wait till we go over that on the agenda, let's see where it's coming?
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it is.
It was, it is added.
Where's that at?
I just.
If the, if the mayor wants to move it up, we can take it. Now, it wouldn't be a public forum item. It would be, it's a scheduled item.
Okay. We'll move it up.
Okay. I didn't realize it was on the agenda. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
But anyhow, we were, we had met with Zakowski Trucking and the neighbors, meaning myself, and then the other two down the road, and we were promised that on June 1st, they were going to put in a berm with trees, so that that would eliminate some of the noise over there. And it is now July 25th, and it has not been done. Then I guess Jessica got a, I called Jessica on it, and she tried calling Zakowski Trucking several times, and they would not return the calls. So a letter was sent out, and my understanding that they had until, I believe it was the 13th of this month, to get that in compliance, and they came back with some cockamamie story about that if they planted the trees now, they would all die, and they would have to redo, redo them again. Well, all you have to do is water your trees. They'll grow. The second subject I have on them is the new building. The new building has not got shrouded lights, and it shines directly into our home, and I'm tired of it, because why is it that everybody else that has businesses out there have shrouded lights? Now, I'm going to tell you, they're playing games with you guys, and they're making you look really stupid to everybody. And I know their games, because my husband used to work for them. But the thing is, is that residents back there don't need that. And there's no reason for me to have to sit there night after night and have these lights shine in my house. It's worse in the summer than it is in the winter, because, I mean, worse in the winter than it is in the summer, because the trees have leaves. But she came back with, to Jessica with a letter saying, well, we're not going to shroud the lights due to the safety of our drivers. Okay, there's a company right in front of us, Malde, Dell Medics. All of their drivers come in, shut their lights off, do a U-turn, never see a light come in my window, and we're directly right behind them. They have shrouded lights. Those lights never shine in my house. I don't understand why everybody is letting them get away with this stuff. I don't get it.
Well, it hasn't been brought to our attention that they're delinquent on that.
Yeah, I did. We talked, and I brought it up a few, I don't know, maybe it's two months ago now, we talked about it, so.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we're, the city staff is not letting them get away with anything. We have provided notice. We are, the item is on the agenda to discuss next step. So these enforcement-type, type actions take some time, but I want to be clear that the city staff is not letting them get away with anything. They, we've been on it since the first complaints. So it's, it's a matter of, you take, you send notice, you follow up, and then you look at revocation of the CUP, you look at potential other enforcement actions. So I believe the light shrouding, is that a condition of approval, or is that a code item?
It is, it is a condition of approval. So I put a packet together for each of the council members, and it's, it's, and it's a separate handout. It says KC Trucking, and it's the October 10th, 2017 special meeting that we had that outlined the conditions. And one of the conditions is that they do landscaping of, of a combination of screening of the non-deciduous trees, and also that they had to shroud the lights. But beyond that, the code requires that lights be shrouded. Jesse sent a letter out after we talked to the, to the council, when we, when we got the complaint, because they had asked for an extension, and the council said that they would only have 30 days to plant the trees. The letter is in the agenda packet. The following page shows the landscape plan that Kate submitted with the green circles that's showing where she's willing to plant the trees, and also the email indicating where she said that she was in contact with the person that was going to plant the trees, and he advised that it was a hot season, and if they wanted the trees to live, that they needed to plant them in September. We followed up with the person, and in fact, yes, if you plant them now and you don't water them, they won't survive, but if you water them and are diligent about them, they'll, they tend to survive through the summer. We also followed up with the shrouding of the lights, and as you can see, the email is in your agenda packet, and it said, and the feedback we got back was that Kate informed Leon that it was, it would be risking safety in the yard and eliminating the amount of light that be, that can be extended throughout the lot. I understand what she's saying, that, you know, you have to have a lighted lot and those sorts of things, but the idea of shrouding is not to eliminate the light. The, the point of the shrouding is to shine the light down, so if you have to put an extra light, you know what I mean, to have downshrouding, instead of pointing the lights out, then that's what you have to do, and that's what most people do in that district.
Well, the lighting is supposed to be in the outside of the parking lot shining in.
And regardless of whether she thinks that it's a safety issue, that's what they agreed to, that's what's in the code, that's a condition of approval. And, yeah, this is, this is common practice everywhere, to have lights shrouded, to limit nuisance light.
And if you look at number 11 in the conditions, we did say, any existing or proposed site lighting or security lighting shall be, shall include downcast shrouded fixtures to prevent direct lighting on adjacent properties or public right-of-way. So not only was it in the code, we specifically said it was a condition.
I'd like to bring to your attention also, when Zakowskis were over in Blaine, and they had their company over there, Blaine made them put up a fence. Now, if we wanted to be really, you know, mean or, you know, whatever, we thought putting up trees would be the best thing to do. It's a lot cheaper than putting up a fence. But she doesn't seem to want to even comply with that.
Yeah, and I have to agree with her. I mean, the neighbors were very understanding, and it was all done, you know, obviously it wasn't done in a room, but it was done out in the street, and they all came to agreement, and she agreed to the trees and agreed to all this stuff, so she needs to do it. I mean, unfortunately.
Jesse and I agree.
She's got to do it. Don't.
Well, we need council motion directing us, I mean, the, there are two avenues. One is an enforcement action through the district courts, and we do that fairly routinely. That's usually for zoning ordinance violations, and then there's the threat of revocation of the conditional use permit, which would prevent them from operating their business. And I think either one can be effective. It may be that we want to pursue the code enforcement action as a first step, because obviously, if we, if we revoke their CUP, it has to be done following a public hearing process, and that's usually a last step, not a first step. Thoughts?
What happens, you know what I mean, in the other, the other avenue, it's a criminal, you know, criminal proceeding, they go to court, it's a misdemeanor, they pay their fine, or they fix the problem. If they don't, they don't want to fix the, the problem, they, they pay the fine, and then you have to reissue the ticket.
So where do you think we should go then? What avenue do you want to take? Bill mentioned two, you had one. Administrative-wise, how do, how are we looking here?
You know, to me, that, you know, we'll, I think we, I think the council has to take a stand indicating to, to KC Trucking that this is, this is, this is, these are the conditions of the permit. You need to put the trees in, you need to put the lights, you know what I mean, in. And you could, you know, you could say otherwise, you're going to, you're going to, you know, cite them. You can give them one more chance to get it done within a 14-day period or a 30-day period. A judge basically is going to say, did you try twice? We sent a letter, we got emails back, but he's going to, he's going to ask what you did.
I think that.
Sorry, Bill.
Well, I was just going to say that I think that you could, you could essentially pre-authorize the enforcement action to indicate the seriousness, so, so it doesn't have to come back to council, that essentially, if they don't come into compliance, you're serious about this, these are code items, these are conditions of the, we've authorized our staff to begin enforcement proceedings.
And would this be a letter that comes from your office, then?
It could.
Because I think if the staff sends another letter, it's just going to be a blow-off.
I'm in favor of the latter, not the first. You know, we bent over backwards to expedite everything so they could get in there before ground flows up.
Yeah.
And, I'm an electrical contractor, it takes 15 minutes to put a shroud on a light fixture. If they need more light in that yard, then they got to put a pole out there and shine the light coming back the other way. The trees, they can water them. I watered mine when I planted them right in a hotspot, and they're alive.
I'd like to make a clarification on the trees, just because I did speak to the person who's installing them, and it's, it's not whether or not the trees will stay alive. He, he does do a one-year guarantee on the trees, and he, if the trees are installed during the summer months, then there's no guarantee, is what it comes down to. So I just wanted to clarify that you guys understood that it's about the one-year guarantee.
But on the flip side, they could have planted the trees earlier. They dragged their feet.
They should have, yeah.
We bent over backwards for this company, and they're not doing likewise, so I'd say we take the more extreme measurement to enforce it.
I can't agree.
If they don't accept it, then we make more, you know, whatever we do to.
Well, I, I feel myself that the people that live back there have taken enough of their crap, and, I mean, I don't know how many more times we have to come up here and complain about the company. You could talk about Joe, you can talk about Dell Medic. You don't have the problems with those people. You don't have the problem with the people that were across the street that just built. I don't know why it's always Zakowski. And I myself, I feel, since they Well, I, I feel myself that, um, the people that live back there have taken enough of their crap. And, I mean, I don't know how many more times we have to come up here and complain about the company. You could talk about Joe, you can talk about Dell Medic. You don't have the problems with those people. You don't have the problem with the people that were across the street that just built. I don't know why it's always Zakowski. And I myself, I feel since they weren't in compliance, they should be also, um, uh, charged daily, um, fees for not complying with, in the timeframe.
The, the criminal code only allows, uh, certain penalties. I think it's up to $1,000, and it's, uh, per violation, and it's, uh, up to 90 days in jail. So, those are, we're limited by state law on what can be charged as penalties.
Where do the people in the ba, in back there get their rights?
You're exercising your rights by making the complaints and the city's acting on it. I, I have to disagree with you. Plenty has been done, and what the council is now doing is upping the ante. They're, they're going to start enforcement proceedings. So, that's...
Okay.
We're, we're behind you.
Well, you know, and especially, I mean, the people that live, um, Andrew and, and Taylor, they live next door to us. None of those people get that, and, and the noise level has gone down since they put that, um, new building up for Barry and Peggy Peterson. They don't get half the noise that they used to get. But, you know, it's night after night after night, that light is shining right strictly in my yard and in my window.
So, all right, so Mark, you want to go with the, you want to go with the stricter?
I do. Um, just before we continue to say further, I know we have light ordinances. Like, Dave's here, he's not the, I mean, he's the guy that's up on the lighting. If it butts up to a residential property, then you, you can't, there's a certain amount of lumens for how far you get away. Is your land residential or commercial?
It's, it's, um, commercial.
Okay, because, pardon me if I'm wrong here, I mean, I don't want to step on toes, but if the property butts up to commercial, then you don't have that lighting ordinance, I don't believe.
And that would be true, except we actually put a condition.
But it's in the conditions.
It's in the conditions, and we went that extra step, and we put it in the conditions as a result of the public hearing and some comments that was, that were made at that time. And so, since the condition was added, my understanding is regardless, we can be more restrictive than the code. And that's what we, by putting this condition, we're more restrictive than the code in this particular case.
And what do you mean by butting up? Because their property don't butt to mine.
Well, commercial to commercial.
Commercial to commercial, yeah.
Oh.
But the conditions are in here, so...
But ours is residential, commercial.
So, the commercial in there, but...
I don't know.
Mr. Mayor and Council, so, just sensing the direction of the council to take a stricter approach. The letter would come from the city attorney's office. The letter would indicate that the council has directed enforcement proceedings to begin. Uh, the only way that'll be suspended is if they come into full compliance within...
What's the standard timeframe? Is there one, 30 days, 14 days, seven days?
Typically, we go 30, but, um, you know, we've given them 30 in the past. The only, the only thing I would say about, um, you know, what, what we could do in light of the guarantee on the landscaping is the shrouding would have to be taken care of within 14 days, and the landscaping would, would have to be installed the first week of September. That way, you, you take away the guarantee argument, uh, you deal with immediate concern about the, the light shrouding. And then the landscaping goes in in that first week of September. And if they can't accomplish that, then, then we, we start by taking it to court. And the, um, letter will also indicate that they're, uh, since they're not in compliance with the conditional use permit and never have been, that they're at risk of losing it.
I agree with that. That's the way to go.
Would we be, would we be able to get a copy of that letter too?
Sure, it's, it's public record.
Okay.
I will say to the, to, um, my, in my last correspondence with Kate, I did indicate that she had to install the trees by the first week of September. So, I think that's good that it goes in the letter. It's reiterating that.
Oh, and that, that guy did indicate to you too, Jessica, that these are going to be six-to-eight-foot tall trees, not two-and-a-half-foot-high ones?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, this whole foliage tree thing is not a big deal. It should have already been in there by now. I mean, it's, it's about getting a tree spade out there with some trees and putting them in the ground. I mean, and you wouldn't be able to predict the weather, but we've had plenty of rain this summer to justify planting those trees. Anytime would have been good this summer. They, I mean, you can't predict Mother Nature, but still, it could have been done.
Yeah.
So...
Could and should have.
You know, absolutely, should have been done in June.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
Still moved. Second.
All right, any, any discussion on that? Elizabeth, you know what we were looking for?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. Uh, this is a court service renewal and resolution with our city attorney.
This is the prosecuting attorney, um, has brought this item forward, and this is a, uh, I believe, electronic system for charging out cases.
Elizabeth, you looked at that, and that's...
I have reviewed it all, and my recommendation is that we approve the resolution, which essentially executes the joint powers agreement.
All right. Let's see. Anybody like to make a motion to accept the resolution number 18...
1819.
19.
So, you were making the motion, Jeff?
Anybody like to make it?
Still moved. Second.
Need a discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Resolution number 1819. Going to the engineer's report? Do you want to see here?
Oh, man.
All items were covered under the presentations.
Okay, thank you.
What she does last night.
How about the attorney's report?
Mr. Mayor and Council, um, the additional item, um, A5 through A7, uh, is a discussion of tax increment financing policy, and it comes up in the context of JP E-Commerce. Uh, you may recall that, uh, a couple meetings ago, we talked about a possible state loan, um, to help them get established. They're relocating, possibly relocating from...
Blaine.
From Blaine to Columbus. And so, one of the questions that they've asked is, is tax increment financing available specifically for their facility? And, um, so, before we can meet with them, we need some direction from the city council. Um, I'm, you've, this is kind of a little tax increment financing primer that you have. I won't go through all of that, but basically, tax increment captures some portion of the new value by capturing the new taxes, and it allows you to put those, uh, new taxes towards things like utilities, parking lots, roadways, even in some cases, manufacturing buildings. What, uh, we've talked about it several times as a staff, and, and this actually goes back to when the EDA was created. Because this, um, tax increment is capturing tax base that would otherwise go into the general fund, our recommendation is that, that if you use this tool at all, because of the great needs for infrastructure in the area, particularly that stretch of Hornsby, uh, is it, is it at Hornsby at that point?
There is a Hornsby, there's also water connection fees, sewer connection fees, that will be due, uh, due to development, development costs.
Right. So, um, at least from a staff standpoint, our recommendation would be that if you're going to use tax increment here or in other quadrants of the freeway district, that you first, as a priority, dedicate it to, um, public utilities and public roadways, because then it benefits the larger district rather than one property owner. In fact, I believe JP E-Commerce has asked for the roads to be upgraded as part of their package. And that's something that Dennis and others have been looking at, the city engineers have been looking at. The second question has to do with if, even if you do decide that there are some projects that do warrant direct subsidy, that you do so on a pay-as-you-go basis, so you're not issuing more bonds. These would not be, unlike special assessment bonds, which are pretty easy to issue and are usually your lowest-cost bonds. The, uh, development-type bonds, um, revenue bonds and others are a little more expensive. And so, what many cities do is they say to the developer, "Okay, we'll give you back a note, and when the increment comes in, you'll get some portion of that towards the note." And that's, that's typically what cities will do to, to limit their risk and their costs. So, those are two items before you. The staff recommendation is that the, uh, when we sit down with, uh, this developer and others, that as a policy matter, it doesn't mean there wouldn't be exceptions, but as a policy matter, the council has established a priority for public infrastructure, for using tax increment, if at all, for public infrastructure. And then, if it is to be used in this particular development, that it be done on a pay-as-you-go basis. Those are the two recommendations we're bringing forward tonight.
All right. We, we've talked about doing TIF districts in the city. We never did open one up.
Freeway District is a TIF District.
Which one?
The entire freeway district is a TIF District.
It is TIF, and nobody's used it yet.
And, and no one has applied for it, yes.
We, we anticipate that this developer may make a specific request. We want to be able to give the developer guidance that, in this case, uh, we would capture, if the, if the council decides to capture tax increment from this project, it would go into the upgrade of the roadways rather than into their specific site.
Of course, that's just city portion of taxes. School or...
It's usually just the city unless you make a specific request to the county for their portion.
However, it's not a county road, so that might not happen. Any downside to this?
The downside is that, um, the, for the period of eight years in this case, um, those taxes, that city portion of the taxes would not go into the general fund. It would go into the tax increment district.
So, is it 100% of the taxes to the city?
No, no. The way it works is it's the increment of new value. So, let's say the land was worth a half million dollars, and the building is worth $10 million. It's the incremental value on the new construction that is captured for TIF. So, you don't lose the base value. That still goes to the general fund. It's just that increment. So, the argument is, well, if you didn't, if you didn't make these improvements, you wouldn't get this new development. So, therefore, you haven't lost anything. Uh, that, that works if it's truly something that, you know, wouldn't come without the TIF. If it's something that would be constructed without these improvements, then the argument kind of falls apart. And we, we don't think it's a bad thing that, that TIF is used or being discussed in this case, but we've initially told the, um, manufacturer's broker that our preference, and we've expressed this before, is that it would go into the, the roads, because that benefits everybody in the district, not just...
You can make that designation, it has to go into the roads and sewer, water?
Roads, utilities, public infrastructure rather than private development.
And as, as Bill indicated, the other option, which is where I think this developer was heading, one, you capture the tax increment and you do it as a reimbursement, so they spend the money and you reimburse them. The other is the city bonds up front, gives them the money up front, and you pay the bond for the tax increment financing.
And Forest Lake has used this tool, uh, Lino Lakes has used this tool. Lino Lakes, you may recall, did a pretty big project at their infest, uh, their interchange. And they, then along comes the recession, and, and, you know, there wasn't the increment to pay it back. So, that's the danger, is if you, if you use it in a way that, that you're not being reimbursed, then there can be a hole in your, in your funding source.
So, Bill, so that Hornsby is going to have to be moved to a nine-ton road, improved to a nine-ton road. So, would that mean that all of the businesses that would move onto that road, their taxes would also go to that same dedication, the road?
Uh, not necessarily. Um, what you, tax increment only works in the case of new development, so...
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
But I mean, so this building comes in, say it's 100,000 square feet, that's small attack, that money goes to the road.
Correct.
Portion. And if another one came in, would their portion go to that too then?
Uh, it, it could. I mean, you can make that decision as new development comes in.
Because I can't imagine their portion of our taxes being enough to cover what that nine-ton road has cost to be put in.
No, it certainly won't. It would, it would, particularly since it's an eight-year district. For redevelopment and, um, for housing and other purposes, the, the district can be 20 or 25 years. Uh, so then obviously, you have more years of collection. Uh, but for an eight-year district, for city-only taxes, it's not going to be enough money in all likelihood to cover the road. What it would do is lower the burden of that road being on, you know, just the adjoining property owners. Because you would probably look at a combination, just as you did in the northeast quadrant, of some city money, maybe there'd be some additional grant monies and some tax increment. So, you'd kind of sew together all those sources and say, "Okay, do we have enough to do it?"
But what do they want to know from us then?
Well, they want to, they want to sit down with city staff and negotiate a tax increment package. We wanted your direction, uh, to see if your, your mind has changed over the years on, on what the priority would be. Because this priority was discussed in the early days of the Economic Development Authority, but it hasn't been raised again, probably with this council, for a couple of years anyway. So, we just wanted direction on those two points, that it, the priority is public infrastructure that benefits multiple users. And two, that if, if we are going to have a subsidy, it's going to be pay-as-you-go, so we're not looking at a bonding package.
Like Bill's question, you have one TIF, you got to give the next one TIF, you open a whole district up for TIF and they all can...
Nope. Each one stands on its own. Each one has to pass the business subsidy test. Each one has to make the case that if you, if, if there's, if tax increment isn't available, we're not coming to your city, you know? So, that's called the but-for test. In other words, but for the tax increment, you wouldn't have the development. So, there's a number of tests under state law that they have to make, and, and they generally fund an application. Elizabeth would work with our finance people and our bond counsel, our public finance lawyers, to look at those questions to see if they pass the test. But in the case of capturing their, their incremental value for the roads, that's something the, the city council can order without a TIF application, because it's not going directly into their property.
So, then if other businesses moved onto that same stretch of road, then they, would they get assessed for a portion of that road too?
That's, that's a determination the council will have to make, whether you're going to assess all or some of that road to the adjoining property owners. But presumably, then, the tax increment would be available to reduce everybody's assessment, not just one property owner's.
Basically, we're just assigning that chunk of tax money to that road.
That's a good way of looking at it. And, and you're not necessarily making that decision tonight. You're just saying, as a policy matter, we're not going to put it into your, you know, your parking lot or your building.
Well, don't we have to too? I mean, you have to meet with them, then you have to figure out how much that, how far you're going to go down Hornsby with the nine-ton road. If you're going to go to their, to the edge of their southerly development and stop it there. And, I mean, because we can't, their taxes coming off that building is no way going to cover all of Hornsby down to 145th. The cost of putting a nine-ton road in has got to be huge.
My understanding is that the entire road though has to be rebuilt all the way to 145th.
Well, all at once?
I wouldn't say all at once. The only portion that's been upgraded is New Hornsby Street, which is a quarter mile from Trump Highway 97.
But I mean, we need to know, okay, so if this is their property, there's a few other properties in between there to get to the new Hornsby. And what, what size building and how much the taxes are going to be, I would think we need to know before we say, "Well, this is a great idea." Because we could end up taking that portion of taxes, and it not even come close to covering the pro, what that road costs to build. You know what I'm saying? I mean, yeah, if they're paying the taxes, we're making a bond payment, but the bond's here and the payment's here, then now all of a sudden, we got more, more debt we're dealing with.
My understanding is that is part of the funding package, so in order to approve a TIF application, there, all that, all those finances are gone over. The, the actual finances of the company aren't made public, but the, the application and what the implications of the liability for the city is.
And, and this property owner, and, and, you know, they have a, a unique proposal and, and a good proposal, but so far, they've gone to the State Department of Employment and Economic Development, looking for funding sources. They're coming here looking for funding sources, so the, which is fine, anybody can ask. The question is, you know, when are you going to, what type of project is significant enough that you want to start to subsidize that project? And that's, that's not an easy question to answer. We know that in the case of the manufacturer that was looking to relocate here, uh, an adjoining community made them a better offer because they had tax increment in place, which is when you decided to, to put the tax increment district in as a tool, so that when the next one came along, you'd have, you'd have that tool to, to better compete.
But it's probably not the best tool. I mean, we got a lot, quite a bit of debt right now, and we're not getting the... I mean, we got a lot, quite a bit of debt right now, and we're not getting the taxes. I mean, a freeway district is supposed to help our tax base. I mean, it's supposed to help us, and I don't know if it would if we start putting all these companies in TIF or not.
Well, I'm just, I don't think we're talking about putting the whole district in TIF, but...
They could all apply.
It'd be nicer to know that this building is worth x amount of money, and this is how much the tax revenue is going to be up, up front before we, but that's all part of the process.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if we even had, not just the one, I know the building is big, I mean, I've heard it's 100,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty significant, you know, by Columbus standards, it's a pretty significant project, and by anybody's standards. The, the thing that will help us is when, you know, when the next one and the next one comes, we can say the council's direction is, we're putting the money into public improvements because it benefits all of you, not just one. And then we don't get a, you know, application after application, that you then have to say, well, we, you know, we gave this one TIF, and now, how do we say no to this one?
So we could put, yeah, so what do you do? Just designate one chunk, one chunk area into TIF? Or does it just keep rolling down the road?
My understanding is that the current district is the entire three-square-mile area. It doesn't mean that every property meets the criteria to be TIF-eligible, because there's plenty of exclusions for TIF financing. You have to meet certain criteria to even be eligible to apply for TIF.
How far out, okay, so if they're in a TIF district, so that money could, say, they could put, we put this building in, or they put this building in, and they're collecting the TIF, it's covering the cost of this junk of road, then another one comes in, and they're TIF, and it's covering a chunk of road, how far out does it go before it's no longer in TIF? Meaning, when does it come out of the TIF? Or can you, okay, so let me say it this way. Once the road's paid for, and they're still in TIF, then can we use that money on other projects in the city, as long as they're road-related?
They have to be eligible projects, and that's all described in the TIF statute. But essentially, when, let's say this EP, or JP E-Commerce goes in, and it's, so you've got the whole district, and then within the district, you've got specific projects, okay? And so let's say they're designated a TIF project. Then the roads adjacent to JP E-Commerce become eligible for TIF funding, and we can define what that project looks like.
But it's an only eight-year, this is only an eight-year revenue stream, so this is a short period.
Right. So it's an eight-year, so it goes in for eight years, and for eight years, you collect the city portion of the taxes, the increment above the base, and you can use it in the road. If, if for some reason, now, we, we don't think that even covers the road, right?
Right.
But let's say for some reason that, that more than covered the road, and you had excess, then you could use that excess for TIF-eligible projects that were defined ahead of time as part of that project. You can't just use it anywhere in the city, because it has to be defined as a TIF project from the, the time you approve the, the plan.
So that money never comes out of TIF? It stays in there all?
The eight years of collection.
It's just eight years where you collect it and put it in a TIF, and then the, then the taxes go back into the general fund?
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay. Exactly.
I thought I had that, but I wasn't sure.
Exactly right.
Because there's people in the city that have been assessed for their sewer and water, and paid for it.
What about their sewer and water? Would they get charged, would they take that out of TIF money, the charges for their sewer and water right now, or not? No, it's pre-existing, or existing, I should say?
Right. You can't, you can't pay down pre-existing obligations. That's specifically prohibited.
What would be the sound? Just put it in the general fund and use it? It looks like more paperwork, and...
Well, because you're, I suppose you're actually using the money. They're not actually coming in, and most of the time they come in, the developer pays for the road.
Yeah, I mean, you raise a good point. The, the times when it's, it's of greater value is when the city specifically, I think it's by resolution, asks the county to contribute its, its share of taxes. And, you know, it's not unusual for counties to say, sure, okay, we'll do that, you know, because this one project against the whole county tax base is not significant, and they want to work with cities and economic development. But that is something that they need, that you need to ask upfront, and then you, then you probably more than double the, the increment.
Yeah, that would be, I'd be, I mean, I think that's a good idea, don't you? Try and get an Oakah County, because then, like Bill said, in the scheme of things, it's small.
And the county looks at it as, okay, for eight years of foregoing this collection, we're going to get 25, 30 years of enhanced collection.
We have to say we don't think we can get it unless the county does the TIF, and the city does the TIF? Is that what we're going to say?
Of course, here, here they're moving from Blaine to, to Columbus, both in, both sites are in an Oakah County, so it's a harder case to make. But those are some of your options. We're just looking for those two direction points tonight. You know, so just to repeat the, the potential motion, if you want to make it, is that the city establishes as a priority for TIF funding, public infrastructure, roads, sewer, water, ahead of investment in, in private development. And the second would be, in the case of investing in private development, that it'd be done on a pay-as-you-go basis.
Is this something that needs to be accomplished tonight, or can we push it out for one more meeting and get two more council people's opinion on this?
They have, they wanted to meet last week. And so we held them off till this week to get your direction.
I, I don't know, I think I'm good with it.
We can also bring it back with a, I mean, if you, if you set that as a direction, that'll help us in our meeting with the developer, but we could also bring it back and have a more comprehensive set of policies to look at. But those two items would help us give direction at the next meeting.
I would like the direction to go that way, but I'd still like Dave and Danny's opinion on this, this is a big one.
Right. So I think what Bill just said, they can move ahead with the developer. What'd you say?
That you would adopt those two policy items, and then we'd bring back a, a bigger kind of laundry list of direction, TIF policies. There are cities that have, you know, we don't need to make a big work project out of it, but there are cities that have several pages of guidelines, you know, how much deposit you put down when you make application, how long it takes, what kind of economic development you're looking for, all of that. That could be a broader discussion, it would probably go through the EDA.
Yeah, that'd be good.
EDA meeting pretty soon? Oh, you know when they're gonna meet next?
October, is it, or?
October.
All right. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion, what Bill said, I, what Bill said, twice now.
Good enough.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Where are we at? Anything else, Bill?
I have nothing further.
All right. Mayor and city council report. Bill? Anything in the city council report?
No, I don't think so.
Mark?
Yeah, we had a Fall Fest meeting again tonight, getting the final details of the festivity, but we also talked about the different direction of taking Fall Fest. To do that, we might need to look at a little bit more funding from the city. I think right now, I had to talk with Elizabeth, and our budget for Fall Fest each year is $1,000. Might need to kick in a little bit more of that. To bring new ideas to the board, otherwise the things just, whether it'll disappear. We're talking maybe fireworks, possibly movies in the park, you know, a different direction for things to do, and, you know, they're both positive ideas, but they cost money. But also, a lot of cities have private, the people who work these have a private committee, and they go out and submit funding from businesses to help pay for it. But the businesses, you know, and the city's also kicking more money towards this, but it's not all city-funded, a lot of their businesses, but they actually have people do that, and then the Lions there might want to take more of a lead on this. But they're going to come for us and talk to us in the future here, so I just want to give a heads up that we might be, need to kick a little bit more money in the kitty for a better city festivity than what we're having. I mean, everything we've had's been great, it's just it's stagnant, and it needs to go a different direction. Numbers are a little bit down, and weather's not been helping us, but there's some great ideas for things to do, but it takes, it takes a little bit of money in that way.
Came for the big sale, now, of course, his tent's gone, no more sales from the Lions.
Well, they were losing money on that.
Yeah.
It's because people are dumping off stuff that they didn't want, you know? TVs, hey, take a TV and sell it. Well, the TV is no good, you know? And then at the end of the fist day, they got a bunch of stuff they got to pay to get rid of, and for two years in a row, the Lions lost money on that. And I don't blame them for saying enough is enough.
I don't either.
It was a great deal, a lot of people came for it, but that had to change, too.
When you look at the other festivals, they don't have a garage sale.
It was working good when, when they could put it in the building, the maintenance building, but...
Right.
$900, $1,000 for that rental tent, that's a lot off the top on a garage sale.
Yeah, and those took a lot of manpower for it, too.
It did.
So, I mean, we got some great things coming this year, I think the corn feed and a few other things, the beer tent, there's some good things, but there could be some really good things coming in the future, but we just have to have some funding for it.
All right.
I just want to give you heads up, so you weren't, you know, unprepared when it comes time. That's all I have.
All right. I have nothing. Public Works report? No report. Public Information Coordinator?
I have one thing, my second item was already talked about. Last night, we had a neighborhood meeting about a dirt bike track on Camp Three Road at a previous council meeting. You all had directed us to have a neighborhood meeting to handle complaints that were coming in about noise. We had 15 people attend, attend the meeting, and we went for about, just about an hour and a half, or a little less than that. We discussed the problem, possible remedies, people were able to air out their grievances and meet their neighbors and discuss what should, what type of voluntary regulations there should be on the activity going forward.
Dirt bike people were here that owned the property?
Yeah, they were here, and I believe they're here tonight as well. So a few things that we talked about, no riding on Sunday mornings was agreed on, no more than two hours at a time would be acceptable. Mufflers must be fully packed. I don't totally understand that concept, but that's what I'm told. And if there's an event, like a wedding or something, where a neighbor would prefer that dirt biking was not happening at that time, if they give the track people enough reasonable notice, then riding won't occur during that event. So that's kind of my summary of, of what happened.
And one other item, I think was clarified late in the meeting, was this is not applicable to four-wheelers. Four-wheelers just generally don't make the same amount of noise.
I think one of the things that we discovered, and it was very highly attended, so it was, it was nice to see all the neighbors come out and participate. Well, there was one dirt bike track, you know what I mean, looked at. There were several property owners that had tracks on their property, and, and in Columbus, we've had this in the past, where there were several activities that people liked to do, whether it's snowmobiling, four-wheeling, target shooting, animals and such. And so I think what we, when we were, during the discussion, people realized that there's not just one track, but I will say that when people know of one, it doesn't matter whether a dirt bike is on that track or not, they seem to get the blame or pointed fingers that the noise comes from that track. We had the same problem with the Frank Borner track, where there were several tracks, you know what I mean, in the immediate area, but if there was noise, it was attributed to one. So I think through the discussion, we realized that there were more than one track, and I think everyone understood everybody's position. So I think a lot was gained, and I think others realized how other people felt, and new neighbors to the, to the community. So I think we covered a lot of ground.
All right, good. Was it pretty civil? No screaming?
Yeah, we, we usually set down rules where, you know, one person speaks at a time, everyone who attends gets to speak, and then there's kind of a group think, you know, you know, throwing ideas out of what kind of rules can be agreed upon. And so, no, I thought everybody was really, everyone spoke, and, and they did a really good job.
It's a little like if, you know, when you've held public hearings on controversial items, you know, early on in the discussion, people are a little bit edgy and maybe a little angry. By an hour and a half, I, you know, people were smiling at each other. I don't think they were holding hands when they went out the door, but, you know, generally, it's a good thing to meet neighbors and have that discussion. The city staff, Elizabeth and Jesse, were complimented for conducting these types of meetings. At least one new member said they came from a more urban setting, and the city would not conduct kind of a mediation session, if you want to call it that. So it's worked in the past, and hopefully it'll work in this instance.
It'd be cool if we could do that a lot more with all the grievances that have been going on and issues. I'm glad it worked out.
You said there was no riding, it was two hours at a time? Is that?
You can ride for two hours at a time, so you can't ride consistently for more than two hours.
In a day, or is that?
Yeah.
Any given time. So everybody who was in the room said it's unlikely that someone's going to ride longer than two hours, but if they take a break for dinner or whatever, they can come back out and ride again.
Okay.
Just giving some relief to the next-door neighbors, so it isn't like a four-hour ride or a five-hour ride, which would be fairly unusual, anyway.
Different groups or something coming out, maybe? I don't know.
Well, it's, it's per rider, so it's, I think the understanding was it was per rider, so somebody could be riding, you know, up the street for two hours, and you could be riding down the street for towers, but it's just that you don't, you know, go beyond that.
The conclusion was that we would send out a letter, a follow-up letter, and that we would also present it tonight to the, to all the members with a, with an overview of what happened, and of what, of what we heard, and what we thought that the agreement was.
It worked out fine, I guess?
Anything to add?
Do you want, I think it helps if you come forward, sir?
Two hours kind of threw me a little bit, and I just, so I wasn't there, so...
So we wrote down, from the discussion, and generally was trying to find out what the consensus was, to, to ride not more than two hours at any given time. So that would suggest one rider riding for more than two hours. So you take a break after a couple hours of riding. Doesn't mean you can't go back out, doesn't mean, mean it can't, you know, has to be a different rider, it's not, you know, for one day, so it's that you take a break after two hours. Jesse, is that kind of how you recorded it?
Absolutely, yeah.
Take a break, so if you guys question on a break?
What's the duration of the break?
There was no consensus on that. I think it's just kind of, again, it's being neighborly, you know? What, what would it take after some, you know, you know that at least one of your neighbors gets pretty irritated, maybe two, and so what would it take for them to, to have a reasonable break from the noise? Is that 30 minutes, an hour?
Sure.
Over the dinner hour? I mean, that was not specified.
Fine by me.
So two, so it could be two hours every night for six nights?
Yeah, except for we, it could be, but we didn't hear anything like that in terms of frequency, and this gentleman can describe how his family uses their track, but I don't think anybody rides six days a week. I don't think anybody rides all day long.
It's less frequent than anybody would think.
Well, I would think so, too. I mean, and I've always said, everybody moves to Columbus for one reason or other. Some guys build tractors, some guys have hot rods, some guys have a party once in a while. Anything that's excessive, meaning every day, all the time, gets to be wearing on the neighbors, whether it's snowmobiles, four-wheelers, whatever. So we all came here to have some hobby.
Right. Currently, it's once a week, maybe twice. That's just where the, the kids are at right now, so we have every places we go, so it's very minimal.
Whereabouts do you live?
At Camp Three Road.
Oh, okay.
My neighbor across the street had one when her kids were younger, and the older they got, the less it was, and it just, eventually just disappeared.
Yeah, it happens.
So, yeah.
Grass grows over the track.
Yeah.
And Jesse, I assume you have the gentleman's name for the record, because you wrote it down last night? I've, I've already forgotten, I'm sorry.
No problem.[1750.76] Ethan Seaburnow.
There you go.
Nice job on a meeting. You guys had, well, you had it in control. It was good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Jessica, anything else?
Nope, we already covered the Zakowski trucking, CUP conditions, so I'm good.
All right, we're to City Administrator's report.
So the, the Deputy Treasurer put a Treasurer's report together, and the report format is a little bit different than what we've had in the past. So the first meeting we have per month will be a, a Treasurer's report up to that date, but then the second report will be a full-month report. So the account balance is, we'll start out with a 630 balance, which is $4,371,026.13. The total receipts for the month of July is $195,687.28. For a total of disbursements of $379,888, for an ending balance of $4,186,825. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about the bond sale. Currently, we do have a bond sale scheduled for this year, and the project that we originally knew we were going to bond for was the utilities project, which is the triangle, the extension of the utilities into the triangle. That approximate amount is in the $830,000 range. For bonding, that's a very small amount, and for Columbus, that's a large amount for us. But again, when you go out for a public bid, we, they tend to want to see more dollars in it. When our financial person, Tammy Almnell, put it together, she said, you know, there is an opportunity to refund the 2007 bonds and save some interest, because there's, even now, there's a lower rate today than there was in 2007. She estimates it'll be approximately $70,000, and it would not change the term, so it would not make the term longer, we would just simply refinance what we owe from today until the end of the term. In addition, when I talked to her today, I indicated to her that we had public hearings this evening, and was there an opportunity to include those dollars in this bond issue, because proceeds weren't going to come until September? And she said, yes, you probably would get a better rate if you combined all five, because there would be the public utilities project, two refundings, and the two projects that we talked about this evening, we could cover the bond costs across the five projects, and most likely we would get a better rate, because it's a higher bond issue. So we would like direction as to, because we need to now set up the finance paperwork in order to do this. And so we wanted your feedback, how to set that paperwork up, because we're looking at setting up that resolution for the first meeting in August.
What's the 2007 bonds, what were they for?
One was for the Public Works Building, and the other is for the extension of the utilities for the northeast, northwest, and southeast areas, so those were for water and sewer pipes.
How long is the Public Works Building in bond?
That will, 2024.
Fifteen-year bond?
It was a 15-year bond. They were actually both 15-year bonds.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I know the City Administrator said this, but just to make it clear, there are fixed costs for every issuance, and so those fixed costs would be over five sets of bonds rather than one, and so you're getting that benefit in addition to the interest rate.
Yes.
Seems like a no-brainer.
How can you refinance a bond from 2007, knowing you have to pay it off? You can refinance it?
The way the paperwork was set up, you can have a call date at any time, and depending on your call date, will determine whether bondholders buy your bonds, because some have no call, you know, dates, and then you're fixed, you have a fixed interest rate for the 15 years. But for us, we had call dates, and we're, we're beyond the call dates, so we're eligible to pay them off at any time now.
And what happened is, since 2007 was the beginning of the recession, rates were still up here, historical norms. They dropped for several years, and they're starting to come back up, but they haven't hit that 2007 level. And so we still see cities all over the metro area refunding bonds like this, at little cost and saving, and great, greater savings than cost.
Council doesn't want to look at borrowing some money from the city? Heard her say five million, five million something we had?
Oh, you can take money out of the maintenance fund and pay the bond?
Yeah, no.
All right. All right, so you need a motion?
Sorry, Jeff.
Sorry, Jeff.
I would do that. I borrow more when you got it. All right.
I, I, I need a consensus motion to tell me to.
Yeah, so what are, what are we looking for?
So the motion would be to go ahead and combine the refunding series with the, the bonding for this year.
And the two projects that were, we did, we did pass resolutions, correct?
Yeah.
The two projects that we ordered plans and specs for tonight.
So we got two in 2007, we got two we passed tonight. What was the fifth one? We got five total, right?
Five total. Earlier in the year, we had a public hearing for the extension of utilities into the triangle.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, and each of the, each of the ones you're looking at has some portion, the majority covered by special assessments?
Yes. With the exception of the Public Works Building, that's a straight up GEO bond.
So basically, by combining them, we're saving on administration fees and then a little bit lower rate, because we're borrowing more money instead of doing individual ones.
Yes.
So.
Issuing costs.
Yeah. So I think it'd be best interests to see you do it.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to make one bond, five individuals.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, passes.
The second thing on, on my report, several months ago, we hired three different employees. We hired a new accountant, administrative technician, and a planning commission secretary. And at the time, we looked at hours and we looked at job duties, and I've had an opportunity now to train all the people within the positions, although they're, they're still kind of in training mode as we go through each year and each season, as different job tasks are come about in those different seasons. And I find myself having to adjust a little bit in number of hours. And so I've outlined a memo on page 78, in looking at the different positions and how I'd like to increase some hours. So my recommendation for the accountant position, I've, I've talked to Bill Warner, and there are some weeks that are busier than others, and he thought at this time, it would be nice to have an additional half-day on every other week. And so going from 24 to 26 hours per week gives him that flexibility in order to do that, in order to meet deadlines that he has for different reports that are due. The second recommendation is, I'd like to make the Public Information Coordinator, which is Jesse, Jesse Hughes' position, I'd like her position to be full-time, which would be 40 hours a week. The last is the Administrative Technician position. That position was a position we created, and that position was to assist the Building Department and the Administrative Department. And I'm happy to say that Jeff St. Martin is doing a great job. We've looked at that position, and what it has allowed us to do is, he works right now three days a week, so it's Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, he only works four hours at a time, and it allows us to take building permits over the counter, he's able to process them to a certain point. But beyond that, he's actually come up with several checklists for zoning, so he actually has taken on what I normally had done with the building permits, and he's come up with checklists, so he is the first person that reviews them. It cuts my time down to minimal time, so we are able to process building permits much quicker. I wish I had them last year, because just that alone has helped tremendously with us processing building permits. So what I'd like to do with that position, because he's only working three days a week, is to have that position on the Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday and Friday, and Rochelle Bush, who is our Planning Commission Secretary, has voiced interest in also learning how to do billing permits. And so my recommendation is that we increase that position from 15 to 24 hours, and then Rochelle would absorb those hours, and she would also be the Planning Commission Secretary. The way we would pay for that, 12 hours would be dedicated to the Building Department, and the Building Department is paid with building permit dollars, and 12 hours of that would then be allocated to administration. The one other thing that we've not covered yet, we finally have our scanning software up and running. It actually, we actually now scan, and it went up to the cloud. We haven't even had an opportunity for anyone to do scanning, and so that's still something that we have to fill with our, you know, someone, and we need to find someone to do that also. So we are still having some growing pains in moving forward, but making progress.
We need a motion to approve the additional hours for four employees, it sounds like.
Is everybody on board with the more hours?
Three employees.
It's three employees. Jeff is, is, at this time, he likes working the three days at the four hours.
Well, of course, I don't like hiring employees or doing additional hours, I have to believe you that you need this help, I guess, we're getting busy around here. So I guess if, I guess we'll have to believe, I'll have to believe, yeah.
Being an employer, I'd rather extend the employees' hours than hire somebody more.
We did just hire somebody, though, instead of extending employees' hours. We hired somebody, and now we're talking about hiring somebody else.
Well, there's always, there, I would believe, anytime you have employees and you're just starting out, you're trying to adjust, you're, I mean, this is an adjustment period, you know?
Well, we're given, who's the gal that does the, the minutes for the planning commission?
Rochelle Bush is the person that is the Planning Commission Secretary, so she took over for Karen Boland.
She's going to get another job assignment, and then we're talking about hiring somebody to do something. What is she doing?
Scanning.
Scanning.
All the records.
No, that would be, you know what I mean, that would be something else that Rochelle would be doing, because we, we don't have any hours left to do the scanning.
Okay. Well, any conversation here about that? Nothing?
I'm good. I'm good with it.
All right, so anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to accept the extended employee hours.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion?
Jessica, can you handle the extra hour and a half a week?
I often work 40 hours a week.
I would imagine.
You started at 32, 28?
I was like, 20, maybe it was 28 to 32 and a half, I think was, was like a range.
Well, time really flies. Jesse's going to be with us in September for two years, so things have, you know what I mean, the time has gone by.
Well, you do realize you're in training for Elizabeth. Oh, yeah.
Elizabeth has a few more years.
Somebody has to take over.
You want to keep her here?
Yes, we want to keep her.
All right, let's call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right.
I have, I have nothing further in my report.
Want to close meeting?
You probably should make your announcements before you go to the closed meeting.
All right, let's make the announcements. Any planning commission meeting?
There is a planning commission meeting, we have one application, it's for a septic system variance.
Septic system variance. Is that up by the lake? Coon Lake?
It is not.
Okay. Then we got, county meetings, anything else? Need to talk about here in the meetings? No? All right, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to have a special closed session meeting.
And just before you, before you hit the gavel, for the record, the purpose of the meeting is to discuss settlement of threatened litigation by the Department of Natural Resources against the city in connection with the Howard Lake development.
Correct. Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn after the closed meeting.
Second.
Yeah, it's, you're not adjourning, you're just, you're going to close meeting.
On the break.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
No motion to adjourn.
You got to weigh your own.